Hey, good to go.
All right, we'll call this regular meeting of the Board of Finance to order. It is 7:18 PM on Wednesday, March 3rd. I'll do a quick roll call of Board of Finance members. Myself, Tim O'Brien, Glenn Freshman, and Dave Motherway are in attendance here at the Police Department. Mike Farback, are you on?
I'm on, thanks.
Lynn Young?
Here.
Deb Norman?
Here.
Bob Stajn?
Here.
And Jim Sullivan is on from the Finance Department, and we are good to go. All right, first thing I'm gonna do is, we have a little bit of changing up of the agenda, because it's a regular meeting, we're gonna do that. Could I get a motion to move the, move and rename the Education Department Facilities Director presentation of the LED lighting retrofit up to the first item on the agenda, and can we rename it to School Building Lighting Upgrades for Facilities and Fields? Can I get a motion? No, move. Second. And a motion, Glenn, and a second from Deb. Sorry, Dave. Any discussion on that? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, state your name that you're opposed. All right, and then can I get another motion to add, under the other action items, a Board of Ed bid waiver request for Chromebook license?
Subdued.
Second. Motion from Dave, second from Glenn. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, state your name and that you're opposed. All right, I appreciate that, changing up of the agenda some here, and hopefully I can follow my own chicken scratch. Oh, yeah, sorry. Thank you, Dave. I had one more, and I didn't even get to the end of my chicken scratch. Can I get a motion to add, after the approval of the previous minutes, an update from the Police on the body cameras?
Subdued. Second.
Thank you. I got a motion from Dave Motherway, second from Glenn. Any discussion about adding that? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, please state your name that you're opposed. Okay, now I've got everything that we said we were gonna do. All right, so the first, first item on the agenda is going to be School Building Lighting Upgrades for Facilities and Fields, and the reason we changed the name a little bit is because we're going to be adding in the softball field, which Human Services is going to be adding in with the proposal from Peter for the schools. So, Peter, I know you've got a timeliness here, so we're gonna turn it right over to you for this.
Well, I'd like to thank all of you for having us here. I also have John Smith who's on. He is from Earthlight. He's our guy, our go-to guy. He knows all the Eversource rules and regs, and he's also the vendor who will be installing this for both the school and the town. What we have is a really amazing opportunity here to upgrade all of the lights in the three remaining buildings, which are Stonington Middle School, Stonington High School, and District Office, to LED, which would, across the board, in every single building in the school, be LED lighting. We have, Eversource has come up with a project for us, or the incentive here. The total project cost is $842,483. The incentive is $251,151 from Eversource. The cost to Stonington Public Schools would be $591,332. Stonington Public Schools, as part of its utility budget, has an LED or efficiency lighting budget. We would contribute $110,000, which then drops the project down to, I'm sorry, hold on a minute, I got, I have a, it would be, net cost to the school is $481,332. This is not including the recent project that go to the town side for the softball field. These are just for the schools at this point. We qualified from Eversource for a four-year, 0% loan, and the whole goal of this is to upgrade the lights where we can improve our infrastructure of the buildings, gain, and not have, and the savings of this is gonna almost identically meet the cost of the loan. So, in other words, we would be paying for the loan for what would be considered already budgeted items for the utility bills in the school's budget. At this point, I'm gonna turn this over to John Smith and make sure that you get all the ins and outs of the details for this.
Thanks, Peter. Pretty much like he said, we have three projects, actually, I guess, four now. Those numbers don't include the fourth project, the softball project. But not only are we installing this project and getting the best incentive possible for this, and it is a timely incentive as well. It's the reason, I guess, we've been working on this for more than a year, I think. Maybe a year and a half, but since COVID, a program came in from the utility that offered a higher level incentive for a fixed period of time, and that time is running out as we speak. And it's likely we'll never see that again, assuming we never see another COVID again, hopefully. So, right now, the incentive is approved at $251,000, like he said. You've got, we've already got the agreement from Eversource that they'll finance this on bill, on electric bill at 0% for 48 months. Each project will have its own separate project payment, but each one will be at 0%. So, that net number, there's no hidden fees, there's nothing like that. It's a straight zero. Another bonus here is the level of maintenance savings, and I don't get too far into the weeds with that, because you guys know better what your maintenance is on these types of projects. But we put your, we estimated your maintenance at a low number, upwards of around $21,000 annually. And that's, in a sense, that's a definite for five years, because we're also supplying a five-year, 100% material and labor warranty, which covers everything in the process, from lifts and transportation, whatever we need to get there. So, for the next five years, you're just gonna be generating income and paying off this project. I do, and Peter, I don't know if you had ever shared the financial summary I had broken down on a Word document for you, but I can share that if need be, but it kind of covers the same things we just talked about right now. Are there any questions directly?
Tim, can I ask a question?
Yeah, so let me just say the process that's gonna happen. This is the same kind of lighting upgrade system that we did for Town Hall. Because it is a longer-term encumbrance, and we have to enter into that, we have to go to town meeting for this. So, we are reviewing that now. What we would do then is recommend this go to the Board of Selectmen to recommend to go to town meeting. Then they will have a hearing on that, and then, assuming it goes positively, we will enter into that agreement with everyone. If the town meeting does not go positively, then the program will be not moved forward, okay? So, just wanna make sure everyone's clear about how the procedure has gotta happen, because it's a long-term encumbrance from the town, not one that is dependent on us funding it year on year. It's a long-term encumbrance. Lynn, would that, go ahead.
Yeah, so, did I understand correctly that basically, if we do this, by the time we make the 0% loan payments and capture the savings on a monthly basis, and I guess also with the patents and whatnot, it's basically even? So, when we get to the fifth year, you know, the real savings start to accrue?
On the other hand, or?
Yeah, sure. So, yeah, that is the way this is structured. And the additional $110,000 makes this even more attractive.
Yeah.
So, yeah, your net savings is estimated at, where are we at here? Let me take it, let's look. Savings monthly payments. So, you're saving, yeah, I've got it right here. You're saving roughly $500 a month across the school right now, you know, by doing this project. And that's financing the entire net balance after incentive, before adding in that $110,000. So, right, it's basically a wash. So, what you're paying right now for electricity, you're gonna continue to pay that same amount to Eversource, but now it's gonna cover this project over the course of the next four years. And then, once you pay this in full, your savings are in their entirety. So, we're talking about an electric savings of upwards of $131,000 annually. If you combine in the maintenance, you're upwards of $153,000 annually.
Hi, sorry, it's Mike Farback. Can we maybe display what you're staring at? Because we got information, we got information sent in advance, and the numbers aren't reconciling with what we were set in advance, and so I'm struggling a little bit to follow here. You know, while your 130 is different than the 110 we got, the totals seem to be different. So, it would be good to see what you're staring at relative to what we were sent.
Mike, this is Jim Sullivan. Can I interject something for a second?
Yep.
What John Smith was just talking about was the summary sheet, which, his analysis, the summary sheet that he was speaking of is a two-page document which should have been enclosed in your packet. In that, in the numbers he was talking about, he had incorporated what estimated savings on, including maintenance. Yeah, in the packet you guys received last week was an Excel spreadsheet, which is the straight-out energy costs, savings from just the decreased energy usage. So, the 131 he was talking about won't mirror the Excel spreadsheet that you guys may have in front of you. The Excel spreadsheet is just energy. The summary sheet includes energy savings plus maintenance. I got that information from Peter, the maintenance. I didn't have time to incorporate it into the Excel spreadsheet and get it out to you as one.
I'm looking at a PDF that was sent to us, and page three has the, you know, the costs for, you know, Stonington High School, the Middle School, District Office, the softball field, and then it's got various columns, incentives, cost SPS, kilowatt hour save, savings rate, and those numbers just, yeah, like center.
Yeah, it's a PDF to you, but it's an Excel, it's a spreadsheet in PDF form. So, yes, that's just the energy savings. Doesn't, that doesn't include any possible maintenance savings.
So, the 107, 892 we're staring at on page three of our PDF, you're saying is closer to 130 when you include the maintenance?
Yes, I haven't vetted that number myself, the maintenance, but that's, I haven't had time to do that. But yes, that's essentially what we're talking about.
Thanks.
Are you seeing my screen right now or not?
Uh, no, we're not.
Let's try that again. I tried to share it and see if it comes up here.
Yep, now we're good.
Okay. So, this, Peter, this is what I had sent you back a few weeks.
There we go.
Yeah, see that? So, the annual electric savings, this is all combined. So, we're talking about all three buildings combined, and the savings are, they're gonna generate annually.
Okay, I just wanna, Jim Sullivan, again, if I can interject again, the summary sheet also is just for the three Board of Ed projects. That summary sheet does not include the softball field lights, which would fall under the town, that summary. Just note.
It also doesn't include the $110,000 that Board of Ed already has, right?
Also correct. So, these were the numbers before, and I hadn't heard about the $110,000. I heard about it, I guess I could say, but I didn't have any inkling whether that was going to happen or not, so I didn't include it in this breakdown.
Well, the hundred, this is Jim Sullivan again, excuse me, the 110, I don't know if it matters for that presentation, the 110 is not a savings. It's just, that's just timing of cash flow.
No, I understand. I get it.
Comes out of the net balance. So, that'll be $491,336 as far as these numbers go here.
Right.
So, that savings number, that maintenance savings number two, that's what we consider a low number as things go. We used $5 a fixture over the course of all the fixtures that we counted in the three schools. So, typically, that number can be anywhere from $10 to $22, basically, is what we see.
So, sorry, sorry, Mike. Sorry to interject again here, but all right, so now you're talking about a total that's $153,000 annually, if I add these two up.
Yeah, and, you know, I focus hardest on the electric savings estimates, and the maintenance savings, we like to supply that if it's requested, so that you do know that there are real valid maintenance savings here, especially when you take into account that you're not touching your lights for the next five years. But in reality, with, especially with LED lighting, you're likely not touching your lights for the next 10 to 20 years.
All right, so this is quite a bit higher, though, than the electric savings here are definitely a different number than we were set for the strict electric savings in our PDF file, so, yeah, just.
That includes the softball, whereas this one doesn't.
Yeah, Mike, did you hear Danielle? The problem here is that we're moving pretty fast and quick, because there's a timeliness for Eversource that we have to commit to this, and we realized late in the game that we didn't include the softball fields, which are having immense issues. So, the numbers are only getting better and more favorable to the town to entering into this agreement as they refine the numbers and try and get it together for the public meeting. So, that's really the crux of what's going on here.
Yeah, it does seem to.
This is Bob Stajn, that 12, that monthly payment then is gonna go down then, the 12, because you got 110 coming out of the 591. So, the 12, 319, that monthly payment should go down, correct?
Correct.
That's correct. And then, now, here's, we're working out all of the logistics between everything, because some of this is encumbered on the school electrical bill, and some of this will be on the town's electrical bill. So, we're working out all of the intricacies between all of those. But you're correct in that the savings and the cost will go down, not up.
And Tim, I know you said this, but just my first rodeo here with this situation, the town meeting. Did you just make this an agenda item in our upcoming budget meeting?
No, so what we'll do is we'll make a motion to send it, to recommend to the Board of Selectmen to take this proposal to a town meeting for approval. So, at that point, our hands are off of it. Then they put it, they have, if you look in the packet that came to you, I believe there's a sample notice of that, it will go to a town meeting that will be held, and if it is approved, then they are empowered to enter into this agreement. So, that's kind of where we're at going forward.
Yes, and the town meeting is set for Saturday, let's put two, so two that.
So, they're gonna have a special meeting, correct? Danielle, the Selectmen have already noticed a special meeting, figuring that we may pass this back to them, and then they would, they would tomorrow pass that forward and set the town meeting day. Thank you.
Very tight timeline.
Will this be a virtual meeting?
It's gonna be hybrid, and I could share more, but it's very clever, and we're following a model of a town of Colchester.
Maybe we can, you can, we can all tune in tomorrow to your wonderful special meeting and catch up on how you're planning on doing that, assuming we go forward with that. Are there any additional questions from Board of Finance members? I'm not trying to cut it short, but I wanna keep us focused on this at hand.
It's Deb Norman. I just wanted to hear, did Danielle say that Colchester has done this? I couldn't hear.
What Danielle said was that Colchester has done a hybrid meeting format for a town meeting, so she was addressing how we're gonna accomplish a town meeting. So, she jumped ahead about three steps. So, we'll rate it back a little bit.
So, my question is, has any, have any schools at all close to us done this yet, or are there any other schools?
I know that, so I will say Police Department has done this, and Town Hall has done this already in Stonington, and we have followed the same process in doing that in years past. The schools were an opportunity that are kind of a newer one, and they have a pretty good program this year for 0%.
Thank you.
So, Tim, I have one question.
Go ahead, Lynn.
So, the only way this thing goes sideways is if the cost per kilowatt goes down. Is that right? Substantially, because delivery is not part of this. That's fixed, right?
Yeah, so. Delivery is part of this. That's total, that's total cost.
Right, that's not gonna change. I mean, it might change, it might go up, it might go down, but it's not, well, it's not looking like it's ever gonna go down, but the kilowatt hour thing is the biggest variable in this, right? So, you'd have to believe that it was probably gonna go way down in order for this to not make sense. Is that right?
Well, I mean, our rate is gonna, is gonna stay fit, is pretty much fixed for the next four years or so. So, our rate is fixed.
Yeah, yes.
What I'm talking about on the back end of this, the only way, you know, right?
Lynn, you're correct. If the cost per kilowatt drops precipitously, this wouldn't make sense. However, there's no infrastructure upgrades that we see coming along that would make that be a driver for that to drop in that manner, but you're.
Okay.
Well, in reality, right, if, because we're not doing anything with your supply as it goes, as far as the cost of your supply.
Right.
If for some reason, like you said, that dropped, that's just generating, well, I'm not saying we're generating more savings, but you're getting more savings, right? So, that's a bonus for you if your kilowatt hours drop somewhere along the process of this going on like it is.
Yeah, but in terms of making the, making the comparison to not doing this versus doing it, it gets less compelling if kilowatt hours drop, right, because?
Well, sure, if it was tomorrow, right? But if you do it this first year while it's going on, and you're getting all of the incentive out of this at the same time, then there's no reason it doesn't make sense, as far as I can tell. You know, I'm not.
No, no, I understand. I was just trying to figure out what is in that electric cost savings, that's all.
Typically, the concern is that cost of electricity is going to go up, right? Which is part of the reason these are so popular. But even then, of course, you're paying more for electricity, your electric bill goes up, but you're still generating those same level of savings. So, you're still achieving savings numbers, in fact.
No, yeah, I get it. It makes total sense to me when it goes up. I get it.
Yeah.
Tim, sorry, it's Mike again, and I hate to belabor this point, but it would be helpful if you guys could send us an updated spreadsheet. I am still scratching my head a little bit as to, you know, these savings, you know, these are big numbers, and, I mean, I'm, you know, I think it's gonna be fantastic, but I just wanna, you know, get my head around exactly how this was calculated. You know, I would have thought that we would have known, I mean, the only, the only way the savings are calculated, right, is you're assuming a rate per kilowatt hour, and then you're assuming a certain consumption rate. Something has changed relative to what we saw previously. So, if someone assumed that the consumption's gone up in the last few weeks, or has something changed with the rate in the last few weeks, I would just like to better understand, just to get, you know, some sense for how, you know, that 153,000, 517 annual savings estimate, is that, you know, how realistic is that? Is that a long shot, or is that a conservative estimate? It would just be useful to get a better handle on that.
Well, we have guidelines that we have to follow. So, the, Eversource has a bible for schools, and even though we may know that you've got hallways that run much longer than what they're giving us, we have to follow their rules. So, this is, this is historical data, as much as it's onsite data. So, everything that's in this project has been vetted, not only by our engineers, but of course, the Eversource engineers as well. They go through this entire process to make sure that it's what they feel legitimate savings numbers. So, guarantees, you know, you can put guarantees on things, and then you can pay insurance to do something like that. But these are based on data that we get right from the site, existing equipment, and then existing hours, you know, maybe pre-COVID hours, but existing school hours and runtimes, lighting runtimes.
Mike, I think I know what you're asking. This is Danielle, and Jim Sullivan, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the difference in 150 on that cover page and 108,000 on the third page is because we added in the softball field lights, and there's not as great of a savings when you add those in. But there's still a savings, but it's not as efficient, because you don't use them as much, other reasons. So, I think that's why you see that the difference in the numbers, that we did add in the softball field lights just in the last week.
Well, Danielle, to.
The other way, right? Sorry, Jim, sorry.
No, I'm sorry, Danielle asked me to comment on that. The summary sheet that, with the 153 number you're talking about, I can't speak to any of that. All I can say, all I do know for sure about that is that is just for the high school, the middle school, District Office. Does not include the softball field lights, actual energy savings from the softball field lights. So, presumably includes the energy savings from the first three projects, plus maintenance savings. Maintenance numbers, I can't, I can't vouch for. All I'll take some responsibility for is the figures in the spreadsheet, whereas I check the math and verify the softball, what the town's rate would, energy rate, kilowatt hour energy rate is for softball field lights.
And that's only a $4,000 difference, so it's $108,000 with the softball fields, or it's $104,000 without the softball field. So, yeah, I'm just trying to bridge from 104 or, you know, to the 130 that is being shown on the screen right now.
Yeah, I mean, all the, the assumptions on, excuse me. Pardon me, I got a fart in my throat. The assumption from the high school, the middle school, and the district office, I'm taking those at face value of what's been presented. I can't, I can't vouch for those.
Could it be that that $108,000 is just for the high school? That's what I'm looking up right now, but.
High school's $86,000 on our spreadsheet. So, again, I don't wanna belabor the point, and maybe someone can reconcile it after the fact, but just as you were saying, you know, these are fixed figures, or they're audited, they're calculated. So, I'm just surprised that they're changing over the course of two weeks. So, if someone could just maybe offline, send us the updated version.
Mike, Mike, nothing's, Mike, nothing's changed over the course of two weeks.
Jim, let me, Jim, let me jump in for one second. So, we've been discussing this with the Board of Ed for a couple months now, and with Mr. Smith and doing this. The numbers are the best estimates that they have, given the actual usages and what they can figure per fixture that we're gonna save. So, it is an estimate per fixture, but they're, and the estimates on the maintenance are estimates. They're the best guess based on historical data that they have from Eversource. So, it's based on a calculation, but as things have been added or subtracted, that has moved the numbers a little bit. So, in general, we're talking a pretty close fit here, but there is nothing guaranteed in these numbers. And Lynn is right. If the cost per kilowatt hour drops in half, the savings are less advantageous, but they are still savings that are gonna be had. So, I don't think anything in what you're looking at on the screen ought to be taken as this is exactly what you're gonna save. It is, this is the best estimate that, based on historical data they have, and that's, I've been in a couple meetings with Mr. Smith and Peter Anderson, and that, where they presented some of the background data that supports these, but it's an estimate. You know, we could be less, we could be more, but based on historical assumptions, it's pretty close to what they're, what they're expecting most safe.
Okay, Bart, no, thanks for the additional contact.
Other questions from Board of Finance members? As part of this, we're gonna be adding in the softball field lights, which will present as savings, but it'll be a longer-term savings, because they're not, as Danielle said, they're not used as much. Leanne is on the line to support that Human Services will be able to pick up some of that cost, but not all of it, much to the way the Board of Ed is doing with theirs. They're putting in a contribution. So, they will probably, for the next four years, encumber about $3,000 more in electrical fees, which we'll try and offset, but they won't, they won't be able to offset that number. It was 7,000 is what the number coming in was from the estimate. They think they'll be able to offset 4,000. So, if anyone has any questions for Leanne about the softball lights specifically, which was a late addition to this, and I apologize for that, but I know she's here to support that and tell us. Softball lights, speaking for her, unless you wanna do it, Leanne, sorry, but the softball lights are. Go ahead, if you wanna.
I'm happy to speak to this. There's a couple issues here and a couple of real incentives. One is there's some safety issues right now with the way the lighting is set up on the softball. I'm happy to speak to this. Um, there's a couple of issues here and a couple of real incentives. Um, one is there's some safety issues right now with the way the lighting is set up on the softball field. Um, first and foremost. Second of all, we would be able to increase revenue generated if we were to upgrade these lights to at least a functional um, playing field. We would be able to rent out the fields and bank some money back in right away to support these infrastructure upgrades. Up of right now, the Human Services Department's Recreation Division gets $4,500 a year allocated in the general fund. I believe it's 936 in our Recreation Division budget. Um, we've been having some conversations amongst our team and we had a couple of conversations with Danielle over the past few days and, um, came to a conclusion that the 4,500 that's allocated right now really only covers just about half of our fiscal year. We're already picking up the remainder, remaining six months of utility usage. We are in a position right now where if we were able to get $3,000 more allocated in that line to bring it up to $7,500, that portion could potentially cover the fees that would be due and Human Services could cover the regular usage fees out of our program revenue special activities account. So really, if we could potentially bump that line up to 7,500 from 4,500, we would be able to, um, cover those usage fees out of our own, um, program revenue and not have to ask for additional appropriations for that and not have to go back to the, the tax care dollar for that. So, um, we definitely feel as if we did do these upgrades, we would be able to push the field rentals a little bit more, which would put money back in the pot right away. Um, we already have as, um, you know, which is always promoting one of the most pristine recreation facilities in our region, and this would really just add to the value of that and to bring back the point of really wanting to be able to rent these fields out outside of school usage and our own usage.
Leanne, this is Jim Sullivan again. If I may interject and tell me if I'm wrong, I, I think in earlier conversations we, we, we had with, uh, me, yourself and, and Rich, the, uh, rector is that we're already spending $1,000 a year on maintaining the, the softball field lights there and that, that would probably be an annual savings of $1,000.
Absolutely.
Expected that these, these lights would, could go for years, years without uh, significant maintenance.
That's correct.
Okay.
And Leanne, that part's, this is Lynn, that part's great. Um, but if we rent out the fields, we also have to maintain them more, right? Not the lights, the fields.
That's, that's correct. And we're in a position right now where we have very strong team, um, between the school and, and Public Works and working together to make sure that if the fields have too much water, if it's raining too much, that we pull the plug and cancel usage and we, we really stay on top of making sure that the usage is safe for all the fields that we're using, for all of the grass fields and would only move forward if they were playable. Regular usage with regular maintenance does not cause those long-term problems as if we were playing right after a rainstorm or right after a snowstorm. So that's why we always have these resting periods of making sure that we're kind of respecting the fields and the grass and working closely with Public Works to maintain their integrity.
Okay.
Other questions from Board of Finance members for either Peter or Leanne? We need a, a motion to send.
We need a motion to recommend approval. That's the key. Recommend approval, that means it passes by some requirements. So the motion recommends approval and the one focus for the Board of Education.
Can I get a motion? For recommendation, for recommendation of approval for the town to enter into a lighting upgrade contract for the Board of Education upgrade and the Human Services upgrade to the softball field.
Excuse me, excuse me, Tim, I'm sorry to interrupt in your resolution, but I think it's important to note the reason this needs to go to town meeting is because it's actually will be an issuance of debt, will be signing, uh, note agreements. So I think in the resolution, it should, it should note that this will be a, uh, entering to debt with EverSource.
Boy, I, yeah, so wouldn't that come from the, uh, that would be from the selectmen for the town meeting?
That's, that's, that's the resolution, but the reason it has, is it's running through the Board of Finances is, is because the Board of Finance has to either recommend or not recommend, uh, entry into a debt agreement. Um, and you can do either one, you can recommend it or not recommend it. Either way, it'll still go to the Board of Selectmen and can then go or not go to the Board of Finance regardless of your recommendation. Um, if, if you guys recommend it, then it just needs a simple majority vote at town meeting. If you guys vote against it, it can still go to town meeting at the recommendation of the Board of Selectmen, but then would require a two-thirds majority at town meeting. And, and something I think we, another point we should make is how much are, are we authorizing to go to be, um, to enter into a debt agreement for? Is it going to be the 637, the total cost, the total net cost to the, to town? Or are we gonna do the 527, which will be the actual debt number if the, uh, school system, the Board of Education kicks into $110,000? So I think that should be.
Of the net debt.
I, I would like to get a motion to, um, to recommend approval to enter into a long-term debt agreement for the upgrade of the lights for the Board of Education and the softball fields in the total amount of 527,693 dollars.
That works.
To send that to the Board of Selectmen. Can I get a motion for that?
So moved, second.
And a motion from Glenn Fishman, a second from David Motherway, uh, any discussion about this? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Please state your name and that you're opposed. Hearing none, the motion unanimously passes. Okay, thank you everybody for that, part of that, how we can, um, Peter, thanks, um, and Leanne, thanks. I think we're good on that.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is actually comments from the public. Um, so if you are a member of the public, you're welcome to make comments now. If you have dialed in, you need to press star three on your phone to raise your hand. When it's your turn to speak, we'll let you know that your request to unmute and then we'll tell you, you can now unmute. You press star six and then you will hear it announced that you are unmuted and then when you are done speaking, press star six to mute yourself again. So at this time, are there any members of the public who would like to make a comment? If so, if you're called in, please press star three on your phone.
There's a couple people that have dialed in, just kind of waiting.
There's any comments from the public, please press star three on your phone and we can recognize you.
Hi, this is Rick Newton. Um, I have a question. If I want to speak on one of your agenda items, do I speak now or do I speak when it comes up?
Uh, speak now. This is the only opportunity for comments from the public.
Okay, on the, uh, Al Harvey open space thing, um, I volunteer for the Avalon Land Conservancy. Um, and this piece of land is probably one of the best pieces of land that, um, needs to be preserved while serving. Um, it's, um, a large piece of land, it, 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 adjacent to the water supply, cops, flows through it. It completes, it's a missing piece of a greenway that goes from Coogan Farm up through the Groton Sportsman's Club. And I would recommend that the, uh, the Board of Finance approve the use of the open space funds um, for helping to preserve this effort. Um, one thing to note is that the last two uses of open space funds were for conservation easements, which are not open to the public. And this property will be open to the public and the P O C D, when it was created the last time, one of the biggest items that the public wanted was, um, to have more spaces to go hiking and rec, outdoor recreation. Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Newton. Any others, um, members of the public like to make a comment? Press star three on your phone now. Anyone else ready?
Nobody is raising a hand.
Okay, uh, I believe that's all the comments from the public. Moving on, the next item on the agenda is an update from the police on the body cam update.
Uh, good evening, everybody. Uh, I want to give just a quick update on the body cam dash cams required under recent law in the state of Connecticut. As you know, we've been, uh, looking to do that for some time and, uh, we were reaching a point where, uh, we've identified a vendor and been working with them to determine pricing so that I can get an idea what's going on. I have to, uh, shout out to Lieutenant Schneider, who's gonna pick this up in just a second. He was able to, um, get the price down by over 70,000, $70,000, uh, in the past couple of weeks. And actually, the vendor we're going with, uh, or we hope to go with at this point, has offered a program of saving eight percent on the total cost if we're able to sign with them, uh, uh, by the end of March. So I wanted to just, uh, have Lieutenant Schneider explain a little bit what was going on, on with it. I know we're on next Thursday and I would respectfully ask that be added to, I know we're, we're on for our, uh, budget presentation, but at that particular time, I think it may be appropriate to get a bid waiver if the Board of Finance is in agreement and the town attorney is looking over the contract because there's an escape clause in it if, if we're not funded, et cetera. So, um, I would like to turn it over to Lieutenant Schneider, who's done the heavy lifting on this and a lot of, uh, kudos to him for, uh, taking the time and, I mean, he was on the phone today two or three times with, uh, Axon, tried to, tried to work this out and get the right price and hit it down. State of Connecticut also will be offering a, uh, 30% matching grant. So this, this project started off at 600 plus thousand dollars and at this point in time, it looks like if everything goes the way we want it to, it should be under 400,000. So, uh, it's actually worked to our advantage materially. So Lieutenant Schneider.
Good evening. Um, just to pick up where the chief left off, um, in negotiations currently with Axon, they're offering an early, uh, signature incentive, um, and they'd like to have it signed in the first quarter of the year. They're gonna extend an eight percent discount on our last quote, which would save the town about $45,000. Um, I've tried to negotiate that out a little bit further just based on where we are with negotiations. They're not really willing to do that right now. Um, but they did allow us, uh, contingency and, uh, allow us to add a non-appropriation clause to our contract. Um, it's 30 pages, so I prefer the, uh, legal opinion on that to our attorney because I didn't, I, I'm not sure what we were getting into with that. So that's kind of where that stood, but they've assured me that they've signed plenty of these with several other towns, public towns of them. And, uh, it allows you to back out under certain conditions, if funding's not available, so on and so forth. So again, um, we were gonna explain the entire process of how we got to where we are, uh, next week, but we just wanted to give you a, a heads up as to what we were looking at and the deadlines that are quickly approaching.
So we'll be getting some documentation to the, uh, Board of Finances next week so that everybody has an opportunity to, to take a look at it and vet it themselves and to see what it is and, and so that if there's any questions as we move forward, it's required by law, we're gonna have to do this whether we want to or not. Uh, it's a matter of just, uh, how good a deal we can get. Again, kudos to Lieutenant Schneider for, uh, doing the heavy lifting on this to get, get the price that keeps, uh, keeps going down, but also get quality equipment that we can utilize and will make a difference and do everything that we needed to do, as well as Roger over there that is, uh, stretched to the maximum of trying to, uh, work with this on how this can be implemented, this technology. Um, I know, uh, Colonel Fishman, you've probably seen it rotten, but, uh, it's not an easy process to get this.
Takes some time.
Yes, it does, yes. But thank you. We just wanted to sort of pave the way for next week and, uh, not take up a whole lot of time, but just sort of get the, the wheels spinning when it comes to that.
Um, Jim Sullivan, you and I are gonna need to work to change the agenda for next week and make sure that it, because it's a special meeting, make sure we notice the town clerk so that we can get that out of ahead of time. Okay, Jim? I'll take silence, it's accepted.
Yes, I just, just unmuted and yes. I'm making over that, Tim.
Thank you.
Great. Thanks, chief. Thanks, Lieutenant Schneider. Um, okay, the next item on the agenda is, uh, approval of the previous minutes. Uh, meeting. Uh, we have, what was circulated was the draft minutes of the February 3rd, 2021 meeting. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from February 3rd, 2021?
So moved.
So moved.
I'll give Mike the motion and Glenn the second. Uh, any discussion of the meeting minutes as submitted?
Nothing of substance, just a minor typo. My, my name was misspelled on the bottom of page four. Jill just got updated. Right.
Okay, we'll, uh, clean up Mike's name on the bottom of page four. Any other agenda changes, anything from any members? All right, hearing nothing, all in favor of approving them as amended, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Please state your name and that you're opposed. All right, minutes are unanimously accepted. Um, next item on the agenda is new business, additional appropriations. There's no change from the last meeting, so we have nothing to discuss on that. Danielle, do you want to change it up now?
She says she can wait.
I think these, I think these will go pretty quick. Okay. Um, next item on the agenda is a request for the first selectman to transfer $3,535 from townwide tech and professional line to the Mystic Parking Study. Can I get a motion to approve the line item transfer for $3,535?
So moved.
Second.
Who was that? Was that Bob and Deb?
Sounds good. Virtual.
Okay. Motion from Bob, second from Deb, uh, discussion. Danielle, do you want to cover this, please?
Yeah, you might remember, um, actually thanks to our friends in the room, um, the police commission has, um, helped identify a partnership with Groton last year in the budget to do, um, a Mystic Downtown Mystic Parking Study and we had allocated $10,000 to split with Groton. But, um, we haven't actually identified a consultant. We actually, it might take a few more years to really fund it, but, um, thanks to the amazing consultant that was found, um, it stayed relatively within budget, but it did go over by about 8,000 or over our estimate by about eight, just under 8,000. We're splitting with Groton, so, um, we are asking for the additional, say, 3,500 allocation, um, to pay and finalize the parking study, which is going very well and thanks to Commissioner O'Shaughnessy, um, representing the police commission for sitting on that and our town staff and, um, it's been really productive. Hopefully we'll some good results to share soon.
Any questions from board members for this line item transfer?
So, so is this the final cost or, or is this an estimate?
Yeah, this is the final.
Okay, all right, thank you, Tim.
Thanks.
Any other questions from board members? All right, all in favor of approving the motion to, for the line item transfer of the $3,535, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Please state your name and that you're opposed. Uh, motion unanimously carries. All right, next item on the agenda is a request from the town planner to transfer $10,000 from the P and Z zoning commission advertising to the planning line department for equipment for the purchase of a scanner and copier. Can I get a motion to approve the line item transfer for $10,000?
So moved, second.
Motion by Dave Motherway, second by Glenn Fishman, um, discussion. Roger, do we, do we have anyone else? Or is this you? Or is this?
Actually, that should be planning department. That should be Keith Bryan's, the town planner. But, but if he's not here, I can just summarize, I think, what the conversation I had with him. This is Jim Sullivan, excuse me, Jim Sullivan speaking.
That'd be great, Tim, thanks.
Um, there's been a lot of discussion over the last, well, I was just, I was gonna say a couple of weeks, but it's probably been a couple of years about, um, you know, trying to digitize records in, in, in the planning department. Well, they, they got to a point, aside from the, the bigger discussion about the whole department, they've had to go, they had to go out and just buy a, a copier and a laptop dedicated to, excuse me, a scanner and a laptop dedicated to taking care of their immediate needs before even the rest of the, uh, the larger. even the rest of the larger issue is addressed. And that cost about ten thousand dollars. So they're essentially over their equipment budget by that much for this current fiscal year. So they're asking to transfer ten thousand dollars from the Planning and Zoning Commission advertising line item, which pretty much across the board, all departments that who have advertising, there's money to be had there because of the executive order from the governor that, you know, started, you know, cut back the amount of advertising people had to do for, towns had to do for whatever reason. So that's where the money would be coming from, and that's, that's why they need it, in a nutshell. If you have any questions, I'll answer them the best I can.
Thanks, Jim. Any questions from the members? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the line item transfer for ten thousand dollars, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed, please state your name and that you're opposed. Hearing none, that motion unanimously carries. All right, next item on the agenda is bid waiver requests. Request from the police department for bid waiver for the purchase and install of the equipment for the police boat from Docsey Electronics, or Electronics, excuse me, for thirty-nine thousand, six hundred forty-four dollars and sixty-six cents. Can I get a motion to approve the bid waiver request for that dollar value?
So moved, Mike.
Motion from Mike, can I get a second?
Second, Deb Norman.
Motion from Mike Farback, second Deb, discussion. Lieutenant Schneider, you're up again.
Yes, thank you. This is again just part of the federal FEMA grant that we applied for last year in the amount of fifty thousand dollars through the Port Security Program. We received the fifty thousand, part of that is gonna be a twenty-five percent cost share. I applied for fifty thousand because originally the numbers looked like they were gonna be closer to fifty for the replacement of all the electronics. Turns out that they came in at thirty-nine, six forty-four. We'll owe about ninety-two hundred. We have a plan in place to play for that through our budget. We'd like to seek a bid waiver, obviously, because Docsey's done a lot of work for us in the past. They're very familiar with the system that they're about to install on the boat, and some of the components of that are related to public safety systems and are not just a generic run-of-the-mill system that we find on the normal boat. They have incorporated AI, things like that. Also, they're in town business, and they've been very responsive to our service requests in the past. Our summers are short here, as you know. When you have the boat go down for one or two days, it's not a big deal. If it goes out for three or four weeks, that's most of the summer. So they've been keeping a goal in getting our boat back up and running, so we'll have to stick with them in installing this new system. If you have any questions, I'm happy to.
Any questions from board members for this?
Lieutenant, this is Lynn. How often does this boat get used?
This boat goes out primarily about three times a week. Goes out Friday, Saturday, and Sunday through the summer months, consider that Memorial through Labor Day. And then we're part of the larger New London Port Security Group, which will go out for any marine search and rescue, security details in New London. So you may see an additional eight to ten callouts during the summer months for those, and that encompasses anything within Long Island Sound, really Long Island Sound, as part of that larger group. So we do provide security.
Is there a lot of this, oh, I'm sorry, is there a lot of this equipment on here related to that kind of work?
Yes, and that's specifically why we tried to go for this grant, is because a lot of the equipment that we're using out there is specific to search and rescue missions, and it also increases our interoperability with the Coast Guard. So there's means now for us to be able to talk to the Coast Guard specifically with the electronics on the boat and download search patterns that they're requesting. So they can dump a search pattern onto our boat electronically with one-two technology, and that way we can follow that, we can pass that along back to them, and they can quickly establish the next search area that we can move on to. It should make the system a lot, a lot easier while we're underway.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, Spike, just one quick question. So I, I mean, I recall going through this in a prior meeting. I mean, my question is to Lieutenant Schneider, has anything changed relative to the prior discussion, or is this essentially what we went through previously?
I think we're still on track. It's still pretty much exactly what we discussed. The costs went down a little bit from where I thought it was gonna come in at. Some of that residual grant money, we can reappropriate with FEMA's approval at a later date. I don't know what we're gonna do with that for right now, but it's a three-year grant cycle, so there's still money to spend. That ten thousand's still up for grabs for the town, provided we can get FEMA's approval on it. So I think we're pretty much on point where we were the last time you spoke.
Great, thanks.
Any other questions from board members?
So the only thing holding us up right now, just is there's an environmental study required by FEMA. So even after approval, they say there's twenty business days out. We're right at that timeframe now. We're waiting on that. I'm not sure how that plays into what we're doing, but they're requiring it. So it's been submitted. Once that gets approved, then we can move forward with the project. And I'm hoping to do that sometime before some.
Well, let's get you the bid waiver now, so that we get you in. All in favor of approving the motion as submitted, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed, please state your name and that you're opposed? Nope, motion unanimously carries. Thank you, Lieutenant Schneider.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Al Harvey presented.
All right, next item on the agenda is Al Harvey Road property for selectmen requesting commitment from the Board of Finance for use of open space funds for the conservation efforts in association with the property. I am going to turn it right over to Danielle to take the reins on this one.
All right, can we have Honor on the, what, that?
They are on the meeting, yes.
Okay, perfect. So Honor is in the.
Danielle, you may need to move closer, just knowing past history.
So Honor is on the line from Trust for Public Land, and she's gonna do a little presentation. There she is. Hi, Honor, thanks so much for sticking in here this long. Do you wanna try and share your screen to show the presentation? I'll just give a really quick overview and hand it right over to you. But basically, we've been working on this, as I think Rick Newton, who called in from Avalonia, they brought it to our attention nearly a year ago. And I'd say this is probably, I think, one of the most exciting potential conservation opportunities that the town has ever had. It's over two hundred and twenty acres right off of Al Harvey. I think like Rick touched on, and you probably saw in your packet, it connects a lot of other green spaces. It's pristine forest that hasn't been touched. We got to walk it. There's a brook, it's over the watershed. Aquarian has wanted to preserve this for years, but it was always private land. It was on sale for one point one million. Clearly, we were not gonna expend that much money, but luckily through organizations like Trust for Public Land, we were able to move forward with a hopeful partnership. So I won't steal Honor's thunder, because she's been doing the bulk of the work on this, but essentially, she's gonna show you a little bit more, and then we're gonna ask for a potential earmark of the majority of the funds in our open space, to cut right to the point. So Honor, if you wanna go ahead.
Yeah, thanks, Danielle, and thanks, everybody, for having me. Can everybody hear me okay? Someone nod? Yeah, okay. I'm gonna try and share my screen, and, you know, I realize it's probably a long night for you guys, so I'll try and make this quick, but just bear with me for a moment while I figure out how to share. Screen.
They're doing just great.
Right, let's see, slideshow now. So, so as Danielle introduced, then this is a conservation opportunity for the town, and this was brought to the Trust for Public Land, you know, probably five, six months ago. And so I'm gonna just really, cover really briefly what the Trust for Public Land does, and then what the opportunity at hand is for the town. I'm a project manager with the Trust for Public Land. We are a national nonprofit organization that has offices in roughly thirty-some states. We do work all across the country. Founded in nineteen seventy-two, we protected about ninety-three, ninety-four properties in Connecticut totaling about eight thousand acres and over a hundred and fifty million dollars in fair market value. Our past partnerships with Stonington had been Coogan Farm, Mystic Boathouse Park, and the Captain Nathaniel Palmer House, a little bit before my time, but Coogan Farm was pretty recently, so I had a little bit of exposure to that one. And, you know, I know we've had a really good working relationship with the town before, so we're excited to pursue that on this one. So the Trust for Public Land, we have a contract with the landowner to buy the land for its asking price, which is one point one five million. It's actually three parcels, and you can see they're connecting a greenway, the green conservation lands noted there, with the pink circle over it is the, what Avalonia calls the Peck Callahan Preserve. And that's being managed, or occasionally managed, for New England Cotton Tail Rabbit, which was a candidate species on the Threatened and Endangered Species List federally. It was removed because the conservation efforts of New England wide, where it exists, were so successful in restoring some of that habitat and preventing them from getting that federal designation. And so this property would connect Aquarian Water Company with these expansive conservation lands to the north, and it also preserves a good stretch of Cops Brook, which flows directly into the Dean's Mill Reservoir, which, you know, I think supplies water, drinking water, to both Stonington and Westerly Rhode Island. And so I got to go to the Aquarian Reservoir and take a look and saw the stream flowing into that, and so that was a pretty compelling point for us. At the Trust for Public Land, our mission is really land for people and ensuring healthy livable communities for generations to come. Clean drinking water is clearly a part of healthy community, so is our places to connect with nature and the outdoors. So we have until early twenty twenty-two to buy this land, and I'm gonna go over just for the property attributes that Danielle touched on. It's two hundred and twenty-four acres, has the Cops Brook, there are trails throughout the property, it connects conservation lands, and it's, there are areas within the property that are really good habitat for this New England Cotton Tail Rabbit. And so that, that has gained the attention of the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. They, in two thousand eighteen, they designated a new national wildlife refuge to preserve this habitat and supporting habitats that will help this rabbit thrive and not go extinct. And so the way that we've sort of proposed a funding mechanism for this project is to put together funding from the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service and have an area of the property that would become a federally designated national wildlife refuge. It would most likely include elements of public access. They allow the public on most all of their properties throughout the country. And then another hundred acres to be conveyed as open space and trails with an easement to the Aquarian Water Company, and that piece of the land would potentially be owned by Avalonia or a conservation entity, where we haven't exactly nailed down all the finer points of that, but the big picture, conserving this whole land, getting the public out on more trails, that, that vision is sort of unified now, so. And there's also a couple little agricultural sections of these properties that, that may or may not fit for continued agricultural use. So the, tentatively, the capital funding model is that portion that would go to Fish and Wildlife Service would be covered by them, and that, that is where TPL works very closely with the agency in securing an allotment through their congressional budget. And so that's a, that's a detailed process, but we're hopeful that, that we can secure a big slug of money to buy this piece. The other portions would come from Aquarian Water Company and the ask to the town for a town contribution towards the piece that would be owned by a conservation entity, possibly Avalonia, and, you know, those, those discussions are underway, but they're, they're in the process of making, you know, the decision as to whether they would be interested in being the fee owner there. And that, you know, that, this is tentative, you know, those numbers aren't, aren't in, set in stone yet, and we always work to secure as many grants as we possibly can to offset, offset municipal and federal allocations, but that's, that's what we've penciled in so far. TPL fundraises to cover our costs and pay for the due diligence and alleviates the administrative burden that often would fall on to the town or a conservation group if, if not for TPL. And that's it.
Thank you, Honor, so much. I'm sure Tim lost his passion, but just to say, I mean, this couldn't have happened without TPL. I mean, the amount of work that Honor and the team have done administratively, but also upfront payments that they're making and will be making to do the first full survey of the land that's gonna be required by the grant agencies and just navigating all the different grant channels. I mean, it's been a heavy lift, so just a big thank you to Honor, again, for all the support that you give us, Stonington. But I'm sure members have questions.
So I wanna be clear with the Board of Finance members what they're looking for now. They're still doing fundraising for this project, but really, the town needs to show a commitment to this. We have a line item that has accrued funds that is our open space fund balance that was funded through payments in lieu of for some projects that have come through, mostly larger subdivisions that were developed. And so we have funds available. This would essentially take most of those out. However, personally, I think that's what that fund was actually intended for. And I don't mind running that fund down because we still have undesignated fund balance. If we had another project come up, that was a non-taxpayer-driven revenue fund that came in. It was through developments, and so it's not something we need to necessarily replenish, in my opinion. That's just my opinion, but it's something that we ought to be using for opportunities just like this.
Mr. Chairman, I think this is a great opportunity, and having grown up here, and I'm assuming that the first selectmen will negotiate that public usage, because, you know, I like to take a walk. Even though people.
That is key. That is key, everyone knows that.
I'm fully to support this project.
Thank you.
Question I have, this is David Motherway, is how much the park is gonna cost?
That's a good question.
Because there is none.
That's a great question. Honor might be able to.
And Al Harvey won't support cars on the side of the road safely.
There, and Honor can talk more about this. There is a fielding question that is where we parked, for example, when we went to go explore it with a number of different cars, and we need to talk with the next door neighbor to go into more detail, because we wanna be sensitive to a potential tree buffer, and it's a huge field, though, so we think we can be sensitive to the neighbor. But that would be up to Avalonia, for example. They would be covering those costs, because the town won't own any of it. We're contributing to that, and we have a seat at the table for uses, and that cannot be written into contracts, but we wouldn't be responsible for parking in Avalonia, as you know, probably from a lot of their trails, if it was them. They carve out kind of a dirt, kind of very permeable, and that's where friendly parking area.
On the side of the road.
We'd hopefully use this field. Part of this area has, I mean, Honor, do you know how big that field is?
It's ten acres, I think, isn't it? Like right at the street, Danielle?
Yeah.
It's, it's good, it's, it's huge.
Yeah, about twenty acres. So Honor, the woman at the right of first refusal, that field?
So there are two fields that, that are part of this larger project, and, and we, at Trust for Public Land, we put the community at the center of everything we do, but we obviously wanna meet the needs of the community, and, and certainly, this is a very rural area, and so, you know, not a whole lot of people can walk, you know, from their house to access this. And so we would definitely wanna allocate a small area for parking, whether that be, you know, gravel or dirt and grass. You know, we're not looking at a forty-car parking lot, but we would certainly wanna accommodate what that you think, as a community, you need there.
Yeah, so I think there's two different fields. One is huge, I think it's about ten acres, and then there's one that's a lot smaller that's currently used, I think it's like a hayfield, maybe, or there's a structure, a barn structure there, but either one could potentially fit a few cars. So yeah, the parking on the road would hopefully not be.
Parking on the road, member Motherway's very right, that's, I.
There's several conservation properties in our town where there's no parking, and they park on the side of the road, and, and that, that's concerning.
Okay, no, that's a good one to come, to come.
Capitaline properties.
Okay.
Town properties.
So Honor, that's something, just to confirm David's point, that we could potentially speak with whoever the future owner, whether it's. speak with whoever the future owner, whether it's U.S. Fish and Wildlife or Avalonia, to be sure that we have some off-site park or onsite parking.
Absolutely. I, I do know that that's a priority for Fish and Wildlife on their preserves where they provide public access. You know, they definitely want people to be able to, to park their cars and access their land. And, and certainly, we can accommodate, you know, what the needs are of this community and this, this preserve in particular.
And the Fish and Wildlife property, will that be a conservation property or will that be open like other Fish and Wildlife properties are where there's hunting and fishing allowed for the folks who can access the property?
We prepped last week for this one. All that Honor did.
Yeah, and Danielle, feel free to jump in, but the Fish and Wildlife Services, you know, they, they treat each preserve, you know, independently. They have a very broad public process where they assess the needs and, you know, they want to hear out the community. They want to take into consideration, you know, they have a number of things that they are required by, by federal law to consider for the property. It, you know, there is hunting and fishing and public access and wildlife viewing. All of those things are considered. And, and certainly, their history in Connecticut has been to allow the public onto their lands. It's, I don't think there's a refuge in Connecticut where there's not public access. But, so, so those, that would be part of the public process. It is conservation land, but it would likely, very likely include a public access component. And whether or not hunting and fishing would be allowed is part of the public process that they, they do after they've acquired the land.
They need to feel better. They said they, yeah, they have a process and they basically engage the neighbors, the community. And so, for example, there is, you know, concerns in Stonington about allowing bow hunting that they allow on some of their sites. We didn't want that here. Then that could come off the table. Fishing, they said they usually allow, most people don't usually have an issue with it. And there's potentially some trout in that brook, so that would likely be. But again, if there was some big upheaval, they, they seem like they really want to make the community where they're operating happy, so they kind of lend it to us. And yeah, they, they basically, they couldn't think of an example really anywhere where they don't allow their core mission to give people access to the land. So they really want to have hiking trails and open space. But the top question they've got to come up are dogs, fishing and bow hunting. And they really leave it up to the community to help make that decision. And we have been talking to some of the neighbors on Al Harvey, and even some of them says, you know, they're hunters and does, but they don't necessarily want it right there. So, you know, the consensus was no on hunting, then, you know, I think the Fish and Wildlife would adhere to that.
First, Mike, remember, Motherway's point is so important that I would almost worth the motion that contingent upon approval of public parking, because that denies access if it will happen.
Well, we're, we're not, we're not making a motion to actually expend any funds. We are making a commitment because then they can fundraise better with a firm commitment from the town that we're supporting the project and will provide financial.
So we're not actually expending the funds.
We are not expending the funds. We are committing a supportive of the process to move forward. Mike, go ahead.
Yeah, just quickly, I mean, I certainly think it's a great idea and glad to see that we have the opportunity here. I'm just curious, though, is someone doing some sort of environmental assessment of the land, how it's been used historically, you know, where there are toxic pesticides used 30, I mean, is there any, anything that's got to be covered from that, that angle before we get too, too far down a path here?
Yeah, so, so the Trust for Public Land, part of our due diligence process is always includes an environmental analysis. And sometimes that means getting a phase one from a consulting firm. Sometimes that's more in depth. And, and certainly, we will look at the environmental history of the property. You know, it's important to us from a liability perspective, from the fact that if we, we come into the chain of title, you know, we need to have the certainty that we're not going to be stuck with a brownfield. And so that's absolutely a part of our process.
Okay, all right. So it just hasn't happened yet, but that will, that will happen. Yeah, okay.
That's right.
All right, thank you for five.
To understand it, we would take the, some money, right, from our fund, whatever the number ends up being, 300K. But we don't end up with any ownership rights. We just end up with the property going to the Fish and Wildlife and Avalonia.
Yes, and that was based on my understanding, which I guess I have even come to agree with, that the town really isn't in the position to own and manage properly conservation land like this. And the requirements for even just walking the boundaries, keeping the trails open, managing volunteers, being sure people adhere to rules. So we just, I think, and again, if people felt differently, we could put ourselves in the mix. I specifically said, I don't think that we want to own this land. I think we want to be sure it's open for hiking forever, but we don't really want to be, we don't really have the staff, quite honestly, to manage something like that. Like I think, you know, Lynn and others have mentioned, we don't even really have a parks and recs department in a traditional way. We share DPW and human services to manage what we do have. So that was the reason why we asked. And we did talk with the Krugan Farm and Nature Center, and they're very supportive of this. They're supportive of Avalonia doing this. They said they will help in any way they can. It doesn't really fit with their location, but they, they just want to be sure this happens, so they'll help in any way they can, but they, they weren't interested. So Avalonia was really great and stepping up.
And then the only other question for Honor is, and I know this is a sensitive subject, but 224 acres, I'm very familiar with the property, not every square inch, but a lot of it. And, you know, if the property was logged, which would open it up, enable it for Thicket Project, right, if it created more space for the cotton tails, et cetera. I'm certain that there's, you know, approaches to that, you know, have an arborist come in. The proceeds from that would be significant. And I'm just curious if that's something that's, that you ever consider.
Sound forestry manager.
Yeah, so, so depending on, you know, who owns the property in the end, whether it's Fish and Wildlife Service land, in the case that the property, they do some habitat management and the property is, you know, logged or selectively harvested to create openings for this rabbit, then, you know, that would be up to the Fish and Wildlife Service to manage that revenue. I'm, I'm not sure how they've done that in the past, but I suspect that they keep it, you know, goes back into the land somehow for, you know, future management. That's generally how those things work. But it, it hasn't really, we haven't really discussed timber harvesting and revenue because, you know, I think the, the conservation goal here, you know, there, there might be some, some small cuts, but we hadn't thought about, you know, logging it to the point where it would generate serious revenue. So certainly something I can bring up with Fish and Wildlife and Avalonia and, you know, any other potential stakeholders here to discuss.
Please don't. Avalonia did that on one of their properties and it did not go well. No one's happy with it. Absolutely was a blight on the land. It was hideous.
I think we'd be very careful because I do think part of this, where we were looking at how it checks so many goals, and again, selective, you know, forestry management would be different. But, you know, the effort is, it's like for every acre of forest, it's like the equivalent of 100 cars. I'm making that up, but it's in the presentation, the actual fact. But, you know, part of this is the, the forest preservation and the carbon capture and obviously just hiking in the forest is lovely. But again, the selective management maybe, but I think some residents have raised concern about overzealous.
But I, I want to, I want to make sure we're clear here from the Board of Finance perspective. What we're trying to do is only indicate a support for this project moving forward so that they can fundraise and get the funds to purchase this. And then it's a very publicly interactive process to determine what happens with that subsequently. So they need and are asking for our support of it, which will be a fiscal support, so that they can fundraise the rest of the monies they need to, to get this project completed and get the acquisition done without any other hindrances to them and then the engagement for there, so.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion.
Wait, 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 wait. Can you hang, Tim, can you repeat that, you cut out. Can you repeat that last bit? The, the last, like 30 seconds?
What I, what I said, Lynn, was that all, really what they're asking of us and, and what Danielle is asking from the Board of Finance is that we express our support for the project and we will fiscally provide resources out of our open fund, our fund for the open open space. And that number is not locked in stone at this time. What they're looking for is a commitment from us that we will support it and we will be part of that process moving forward. So if they can fundraise saying, look at the town of Stonington's committed to this project too, let's get this and let's get this property acquisition accomplished so that then we can move forward with best use of the land.
Well, then we would be remiss, look, I'm highly in favor of this. This is about the most pristine piece of property you're going to find in this town. But we'd be remiss not to at least raise the, ask the question of what comes off the tax rolls?
What, what their, yeah, that's, that's a question I don't know because it's, I don't know what it's on right now.
Residential zone, and I don't know exactly how many.
So we don't know what tax dollars it's paying now?
Um, we can look at just land right now, so I'm sure it's quite small. We can look. I can go back and.
You'd be surprised. Jennifer's online.
I, I do believe it's under current use or, sorry, Public Act 490.
Oh, is it 490? Okay.
I believe so. I, I can certainly get those numbers for you.
Yeah, no, it probably is knowing the owners of it, but, okay.
And I think, Lynn, which I think will resonate with some members too, I think one of our concerns is given how large it is, and even though not all of it could be developed, there's some wetlands, there's other things, the topography. But, you know, if this did become multifamily, single family houses, you'll think of all those schoolchildren. So even if they could come off tax.
I, I know, but in order to make a financial decision, you still have to know what it costs you, right? So, I mean, you could make the argument, you needed to know the highest and best use of it. I mean, I, I, don't get me wrong, I'm completely in favor of this, but we're a board of finance, so.
What we could do is when we come back for, hopefully come back for our actual allocation, we could try and have those numbers to showcase.
Okay.
Any other questions from board members before we entertain a motion? Mr. Freshman, would you like to make your motion?
I would make a motion to support for the acquisition of the Al Harvey Road property.
Second? Second? Second from Lynn. Any further discussion from Board of Finance members? Do you need anything more concrete?
Is that, Honor, do you, is that enough to help with the grants and with fundraising? Or do you need them to mention a specific potential amount or how much is in our open space fund?
Um, I will follow your lead, Danielle, and, you know, the, the more commitment the better, always, as it sort of success, success. And, you know, money, money comes after money. But I think, you know, a firm commitment from the town is certainly, you know, the right, a step in the right direction towards, you know, figuring out this, this sort of jigsaw puzzle of, of funding and conservation outcomes.
So do you want us to, do you want us to amend that motion?
300.
Yes, can I?
I will, I will agree to amend the motion, rescind the original motion.
I'll second that.
The balance of our fund is?
Jim, the, the down is more like 375 or something like that, but say 310, because to be safe.
Well, let's say 300,000 as a safe amount.
Okay, good.
Make a motion to express a commitment of support not to exceed $300,000 from the town's open space fund.
Hang on.
One second. Second from Lynn. Any discussion for this motion?
Yeah, what was the magic of the 310, Danielle?
Well, the motion is for 300 because our open space fund has about 370 in it, so that leaves some money in case something else came up.
Right, but 310 doesn't sound like an arbitrary number.
It wasn't. It was to make up, it was to get to that whole figure in that slide where Honor shows the full asking price, but understanding that the numbers from U.S. Fish and Wildlife, potentially Aquarian, none of these are fixed yet. They're still negotiation. So I think it's 300, yes.
And you're going to fundraise.
Okay.
Other discussion on the motion from board members?
I, sorry, Tim, sorry, Tim, it was Mike, I'm trying, I, I, yeah, maybe, maybe something more along the lines of our intention to utilize up to 300,000. I, I mean, I, I think, you know, I, I don't know enough to know what, what's a, what's a fair share from the town versus, you know, some of these other entities versus fundraising goals. So I'm comfortable with it.
So Mike, the motion was not to exceed 300,000. But it was not a commitment of.
Yeah, commit, yeah, commitment, all right, all right, yeah. Yeah, intention or, yeah. Okay, that's fine, that's fine, yeah. Or maybe, maybe Glenn could restate it. Sorry, one more time.
Okay, mo- motion to, of support for the acquisition of the Al Harvey Road property not to exceed 300,000 from our open space fund.
Okay, got it, thank you.
Other questions or discussion from board members on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Please state that you're opposed. Hearing none, motion unanimously passes.
Thank you so much, Honor, thank you. And between now and anytime, I'm happy to take some, some one-on-one feedback or questions.
I bet you could finish up talking with Honor at your.
No, to Mike, to Board of Finance members. If anybody wants to meet to talk about questions or concerns, we can do one-on-one. Be sure we have it locked down.
Sure, and, and the first election has been good about keeping me informed as the project has gone along and I'll try and, I should be able to keep you all more informed now too. All right, thank you, Honor, appreciate it.
Thank you all for having me. Good night.
Good night.
Thank you.
All right, next item on the agenda is discussion and approval of the assessor's request to switch assessment software package for personal property from Vision to Quality Data Services. Jennifer, are you on?
I am. How's everyone doing tonight?
Just wonderful.
Good, good. Well, I'll tell you not to take up too much of your time, but I did want to highlight some of the advantages that converting to Quality would, would give the assessor's office. Quality is a Connecticut-based company with certified assessors on staff. They're inherently familiar with Connecticut state statutes regarding the valuation of personal property, while Vision does business all across the country. Their software, as a result, is not tailored specifically to Connecticut or our valuation methodology. Currently, there's only other, only one other town in the state that uses Vision's personal property software besides Stonington. Quality offers the ability to track various elements of the personal property process. So at any given time during the grand list season, I can run reports on how many accounts have filed to date, how many declarations have already been processed by staff members, and how many remain to be processed. During grand list season, this is a really important tool to keep track of where we are and our progress. They build a database for each year, which gives us the ability to see an account's history over several years. Currently, if we need to reference a past year assessment, we have to go down to the vault or pull the manual file because Vision does not have the capacity to store multi-year data. This would vastly increase the efficiencies in the office when processing accounts. Quality offers us the ability where we could pull up the current year declaration and on the same screen have the past year filing in front of us so that we could compare those two sitting right at our desk. If a taxpayer were to call after the grand list is signed and question why their assessment has increased over the last year, right now, we would have to leave our desk, pull two different binders and find their paper filings. With Quality software, we would be able to do all of that at our desktop without having to put the taxpayer on hold and searching for the data. We would also have the ability to track how long an account has been delinquent and not filing. There's a much heavier reporting component to the Quality software. It allows us to pull reports by business type so we can do appropriate analysis on how different businesses are reporting. For example, if, if we wanted to look at all the gas stations in town, for instance, we could run a report and we would be able to view all the different assessments. This ability allows us to find outliers who may be underreporting and need to be audited. Also, there's currently no mechanism in place to address all the accounts that do not file. This results in staff members having to manually assess all of those accounts. That typically is about 25% of our personal property list. Quality offers a series of options which would allow the assessor's office to value these accounts and apply penalties with one push of a button. This year, we had 764 accounts. This year, we had seven hundred and sixty-four accounts that were late or didn't file. We had to individually go through every single one of these and process it by hand. Automating the process with Quality software will achieve huge efficiencies in time that would, could allow staff to work on other aspects of the grant list. Additionally, Quality also offers for two hundred dollars annually, the ability to host our declaration online. For accounts that wanted to use that service, we could mail a postcard instead of the full property declarations, which would also result in savings to our postage line items. Taxpayers would be able to sign in and submit their declaration online. Staff would then be able to review their return and either accept it or send it back to the taxpayer if we had questions. The conversion to Quality takes about two days from start to finish. Training is included in the conversion fee, which is five hundred dollars, and Quality staff, uh, will do the training onsite here in town as opposed to having staff have to travel to their Waterbury location. So my respectful recommendation to the board at this point would be to move forward with the conver- with the conversion to Quality. The process to get the Vision software working has already been over two years and it's still been unsuccessful. I believe we should remit the final payment to Vision for the Vision eight conversion since it was inclusive of the real property as well and the real property system works very, very well for our purposes. And then in regards to personal property, we can focus on moving forward with quality data. But I, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Jim, this makes a lot of sense, I think we should do it immediately, do it, do a supplemental.
Okay, um.
Tim, Tim, this is Jim Solomon, may I interject something again?
Go ahead, Jim.
Um, I, I, correct me if I'm wrong, Jennifer, and correct me if I'm wrong, Tim, but your understanding, I, I, I don't think they're actually asking you for anything to approve anything tonight. I think this request is, this is actually an explanation of a, that arose out of, questions that arose doing, during Jennifer's, uh, tw- twenty-one, twenty-two budget presentation of, of why a line item was increasing. So I think this is an explanation to inform you to, when it actually comes to deliberations, that a certain line item will be increased. So I don't think you actually need to take any action tonight. Is that, is that your understanding, Jennifer?
Yes, correct.
Jim and Jennifer, I thought that, um, based on that board finance meeting, the feedback from the board was, why wait a whole year?
Right.
This is so inefficient, why not expend the money right now?
Let's get it going.
Oh, okay, I mean, that was my understanding, I, I could be wrong, so I'm just, I was just trying to frame the, make sure it was framed properly and I was wrong, so.
Oh, I understand.
I mean, Quality, sure, Quality could, could, are, you know, would be ready to go at any point that we gave them the go-ahead.
Yeah, I, I.
I think, let me, let me do this, because I think this fits perfectly in with what I've watched Mr. Freshman do, and he was the chairman here. Um, if I can get a sense of the board, would people be supportive? Should there be a request from the assessor to come back in this fiscal to fund this improvement? And would there be an encouragement even for the assessor to come back?
Absolutely, I absolutely encourage our assessor to move as fast as possible before seeing issue.
Yeah, yes and yes from Mike.
Yes and yes?
Yep, yep.
Agree.
I'm happy to do so.
So the sense of the board, Jennifer, I hope you got the message. Go, go fast, go quick and let's be it soon.
Loud and clear, it's received loud and clear, thank you so much.
Okay, this is, well, this is Jim again, this is Jim again, before we move on then, um, what are we saying here tonight? Are we just allowing her to expend money from her current budget, move it around, or are we coming back in April for an additional appropriation, a, a line item transfer?
We, we are, Jim, what we are doing is, is encouraging the assessor to keep moving forward down this path expeditiously and should she need more funds or to move funds around with a line item transfer to come back in front of the board. And I would assume that will be a very quick meeting for her to attend, um, that it will be done promptly, but at least if she moves forward, we know exactly what it is, it's not a, a quote.
Okay, well, how, how, you having said that, I think I, I could suggest this, that there is money in the revow fund, I would just say, let her use that money and she wouldn't have to come back to the board of finance, but I just wanted to make, clarify that point that you're getting, she, you're giving her, I mean, carte blanche is the wrong word, but she's got the go-ahead and she'll use whatever funds she has at her disposal to move ahead and doesn't need to come back for anything formally after this point.
Well, Jim, here's, here's the thing that I would say, much that we have done, um, with other departments in the past, we're saying that if she has the monies in her budget currently, to not worry that the board of finance will not support the line item transfer, but to proceed as expeditiously as you can, and if you need to do a line item transfer, come back before the board, but you already have the support of the board to do this. And should you need extra funds because they are not available and what you currently have left remaining in the budget, then come before us and we'll figure out how we can do that.
I think we're set, uh, Jim, to your, to your point, I think we can use the revow fund for this.
Very good, okay, I concur then.
And that, so Jennifer, you get what I'm saying is, don't, don't worry if it's got to be moved around for equipment or line item transfer, don't hold back and we'll support doing that through your budget.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Yes, thank you so much, thank you, have a great night.
You too, thanks, you too. Alright, um, next, next is, um, is Chris on? Okay, the next item on the agenda, and we are, I apologize to members of the board of finance, but with two meetings going on simultaneously, we have people attending both and we're just pulling Chris Williston over. Um, oh, if he's gonna, Roger, can you find out if he's gonna be a minute and we'll change the agenda around because it's a regular meeting?
Nope, I'm on, I got the, uh, board of ed on the second screen.
Okay, perfect.
We're multitasking tonight.
Yep, don't, don't text him, Roger, I think we got, alright, next item on the agenda is requests from the board of education for, uh, Chris, this is a Chromebook license, right?
Correct, this is for the Chromebook management licenses, uh, as part of one-to-one refresh that we use year over year. Um, the license rate will go up starting Friday, or after Friday, I should say, um, by nine dollars. Uh, so we wanted to get ahead of that and go ahead and get these purchased prior. These are using existing funds in this year's SIP account, uh, and the remaining balance of this year's SIP account will be used to purchase Chromebooks. And then next year's SIP request, uh, included these licenses as well, so the offset will be used to purchase the remainder of Chromebooks from this year.
Alright, so before we go, hang on, before we go into this, can I get a, can I get a, okay, hang on, I'm just trying to get to the quote. Can I get a motion to approve bid waiver request for, uh, purchase of Chromebook licenses in the amount of thirty, twenty-three thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars?
So moved, Bob Satchin.
I got a second.
Second.
Thank you. Second, Glenn Freshman, so motion, Bob Satchin, um, second from Glenn and discussion, so Chris, I just want to clarify to the board of finance members that nine dollars is per Chromebook and you guys are looking at nine hundred and twenty-five of those, correct?
Uh, it is twenty-five dollars per license, the increase was nine dollars.
The increase, correct, the delta was nine dollars, but per Chromebook, so it's nine times nine hundred and twenty-five, if you're looking at the total savings Chris is trying to achieve for the town.
Correct, eight thousand, three hundred and twenty-five dollars savings.
Any questions from board members for Chris?
So I, this is David, I just want to make sure I understand this right, so the, these nine hundred and twenty-five licenses and, and I love the nine dollar savings, by the way, fantastic. Some of those we already own or we're going to buy with money map, is that right, is that, how many?
All of those we're going to buy, these are perpetual licenses, so they are consumed with each new device purchased, you use that license for it, for the duration and lifespan of that device.
I, I, no, I, I get the license process, what I'm asking is, how many units are you going to buy, you're gonna buy nine hundred and twenty-five units? Is that what you have budgeted in this year's funds?
No, this year's funds, we will be spending, uh, one hundred and ninety-seven Chromebooks will be the remainder after we make this purchase. So one hundred and ninety-seven will be purchased now, the remainder would be purchased in summer, which is part of next year's SIP. And again, the only way this doesn't make sense is if we never purchase another Chromebook and never use these licenses, which, which won't happen.
One of the things I asked last year during the budget process, Chris, was, uh, break down an inventory of these units, right? Um, I suspect you're doing a FIFO management for a profile of these things, right? And, and you have serial numbers that align with all of these, look forward to that when we deliver that next SIP, um, because it'll be very unfortunate, we spend, you know, all this money on things that doesn't get approved, um, and I want to make sure that that happens for you, right? So the details, um, of all of the Chromebooks, a- as they're allocated to this nine twenty-five will be very helpful, um, when, uh, when we do the SIP process.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Other questions from board of finance members? None? All in favor of approving bid waiver requests from the board of education for the purchase of nine hundred and twenty-five licenses for a total of twenty-three thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, please state your name and that you're opposed. Motion unanimously carries. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you all.
Alright, next item on the agenda. Discussion items, board of finance discussion of the board's twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two department budget. Um, this was one that, as you remember, uh, that when we were doing the general government budget presentation, uh, I wanted to make sure we had all board members in attendance so we could have this discussion. With that, Jim, do you want to cover it or you want me to do it?
Well, um, there's really, there's only two line items, I'm really, I, I, I want some input from, from the board, and that's line fifty-one and, and line fifty-four, well, fifty, line fifty-one is Gatsby contribution. That's really actually going to be, that's yet to be determined, it's, we still don't have our OPEP report for the fiscal year, so that number will probably be plus or minus ten thousand dollars. Really, the, the big McGill is line fifty-four, the contingency for COVID nineteen. There's five hundred thousand dollars from, from, from last year, we, we haven't used any of that money yet, I know there's been, I think there's been some discussion with the board of finance, excuse me, board of education, that they might need it this year. Question is, and, we don't need an answer to the decision, it's just, I want you guys to start talking amongst yourselves, um, about contingencies, i- i- and not necessarily COVID nineteen, but for, you know, any of the contingencies we talked about over the last several years, loss of state education, teachers retirement, which I don't think that's an issue i- i- in the, in the near future, but, but COVID is still on the board, so that's just something I want to put out there, have it on your, uh, on your radar and, and have you guys thinking about, come deliberations, what you might like to do with that, with, with that figure. That's really, I, I really wanted you guys to address tonight, or, or start thinking about tonight. Now leave it there.
Yeah, I guess, I guess really, um, in what Jim's saying is, we don't have to have an action item tonight, but he did the budgeting for the finance department with that five hundred thousand recurring in next year's budget again, so we would have that additional funding there. Um, and, and I think he's trying to get a sense of the board, is it worth, is it desirable to leave that in without going into deliberations? Because this is not a deliberation, it's just a sense of the board of, um, do we want to address it now or do we want to just take it as a mental action item that it is there and then through the deliberations, uh, deal with it at that time? So I'm just trying to get a sense.
Well, I think it's a prudent thing to do. And we could probably deal with the best during deliberations. I mean, let's, let's remember, you know, I'm myself, I'm here.
It's Mike, yeah, oh, sorry.
Go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, I, 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 I think certainly last year, yeah, it felt, it felt very prudent and I think there were a tremendous number of unknowns, um, but, but I, I, you know, I, I do feel like we're, uh, we're getting a bit more clarity on things, I mean, I'll report out in a second on where we are with tax collections, um, and, and i- i- it does feel like, oh yeah, no one can predict the future, but, um, that, that is a big number, uh, for us to hold, hold off to the side and certainly will impact the mill rate, so my preference would be to run the spreadsheets with that out, so we have a clear picture of, of kind of where things stand, and then if we feel for some reason we need to increase the mill rate to, to cover some potential contingency, that that's a discussion point at that point in time. I, I'd rather the default not be to have that included, uh, uh, because I just think it's going to confuse matters for us.
Well, actually, Mike, if I may, um, the rea- the reason I left it in, this is Jim again, excuse me, the reason I left it in there to begin with is because by leaving it in there, year-to-year variances, overall variance, you know, increase or decrease in budget is, is apples to apples. If you take that five hundred thousand dollars out before you even start deliberations, right there, you've already skewed your, your year-to-year variance because you've, you've taken out a bit.
Yeah, no, I understand that, and, and I, and I mean, and I appreciate the transparency, I mean, that, that helps, I think, just in terms of some of the initial discussions, but, but I feel like at the end of the day, the taxpayer cares about the mill rate in the current year, not, 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 you know, how does this, you know, you know, compare, you know, apples to, on an apples-to-apples basis, uh, uh.
That's why I think during deliberations.
Yeah.
Because that's when we set the mill rate, that final deliberation.
But I think maybe, how about this for a suggestion, and I'm throwing this out to the members, I, I'm not, you know, I haven't thought it through yet, how about if we ask Jim to give us that summary sheet which has budget and that with it both in and with it out, so that we know from a starting point, if we removed it where we were at and from a starting point.
Okay, you remove the mill rate reduction.
The mill rate reduction, just run it both with and without that five hundred in, so that we have a better point for discussion during our deliberations and commit to neither one, but leave it the budget as is for now.
Boy, I knew bringing this up was going to create more work for myself.
Yeah, Jim's willing to do that, that works, that works.
Alright.
The chairman hated by a beer, thank you, Jim.
Will do, alright.
Alright, thanks, sir, that worked.
Thank you, Jim, alright, any other discussion from board members on this, or I think that's pretty good place to wind up at? Okay, um, we have correspondence from Ellen Whitford and the petition from Lantern Hill. So we had one correspondence from Ellen Whitford, summarization of it is that, uh, he called the first electman's office, talked to her and has requested to see the plans for the bridge, this is the Lantern Hill Bridge, um, and he would, has worked on bridges in the past and would like to, uh, reach, he was, reached out to share his concern that the temporary fix will cost taxpayers more in the long term, and he would support funding the full replacement now, and, um, he would prefer to see the bridge closed for now to enable the long-term replacement. So that was his correspondence in the, in the summarization. And then as I submitted to you, um, there was a petition submitted from the Lantern Hill Valley Association, um, containing over, uh, three hundred signatures, uh, and, uh, as I submitted to you, I submitted the letter, um, talking about the rationale of why people signed the petition to support completely fixing the bridge. I was not able to share with you all of the, um, supporting documents, it was a large email, but we, you got it as part of your packet for the, um, meeting, so you can see the summaries of where the locales were, that the people who signed the petition were located in, resided in, um, and their names and, or business, um, business entities which signed the petition and supported full replacement of that bridge. resided in, and their names and or business, business entities which signed the petition and supported full replacement of that bridge. Jim, do we have any other correspondence other than that? I didn't believe we did either. All right, so that is the correspondence we have. Liaison report. First one is the SIP liaison report. Lynn, anything to go over?
No, you guys are seeing it with your own eyes, so.
How about WPCA? I think we've seen it.
Yeah, not, there's not too much going on there that's any different than the usual.
Mr. Freshman for Board of Ed?
I had another conversation with Chairman Tedesco and of course, we all know that budgets are reduced by the Board of Ed from 8.9 to 2.5%. There are still, however, two new positions in there and I wouldn't discuss that frankly, but that's a great job Ian Ford did in reducing from 9% to 2.5%.
Other liaison reports, Mike, I'll go through to you.
Thanks, Tim. Yep, as I was referencing earlier, I did just hear from Linda Camelia, our tax collector. And she gave me quite a bit of data, but bottom line, I'll just read the last sentence to, to you. She wrote, it's been a crazy year, but collections are right on target with past years. Really, it's, if you look at the data she provided, you know, we're going to hit our, we're projected to hit the, the collection rate that we'd set for the year. No different than what we've had the last year or two. So, you know, obviously we, we, there were a lot of unknowns going into this, this fiscal year. But, but the good news is it appears as if tax payments are coming in this year. You know, right in line with what we've seen in, in, in recent history. So good news to share there.
That's great.
So I guess, Mike, the one, the one question which I think is the obvious one, but, and I think the answer is obvious. So given all the information from Linda, you've seen the correspondence you had, there's no real feeling from her or from you that we ought to change the assumptions on our, our collection rates for the budget for this go-round?
Correct, yeah, yeah. We would, we would, yeah. We would keep it, I think it's 98.75 if I remember off the top of my head, but I'd have to double check. Or Jim might know off the top of his head.
I, I believe you're correct, but no reason to change it is really the bigger, bigger.
Yep, no reason to change.
Mike, it's Lynn. Did Linda, does she know? Or would she have any way of knowing? Well, you know, how many people are availing themselves of the, you know, the suspension of things like foreclosures and whatnot?
Sorry, I do have data on the number of folks who've requested deferrals. Sorry, was that your question?
No, it's more, you know, there's a moratorium on foreclosures, right? And evictions and things like that. I don't know, she never gave you any data. She has no way of knowing what that is, right?
Yeah, I don't.
Well, Lynn, this is Jim. I mean, foreclosures in that have never been a big issue for Stonington. And the fact that our collection rate is, is staying the same or right at in prior years, I don't think that's an issue at all.
Well, no, but in the course of a pandemic, if you've lost your job and they can't foreclose on you, how do we know what the, whether people, whether there's going to be a rush on foreclosures in six months? I'm just asking if we do.
I think Jim's point though is that if you're, if you're getting foreclosed on, you're probably not paying your taxes.
No, the bank will pay them because the bank, the bank pays the tax if you foreclose. You're not paying them, they are.
But, but the second payment for real estate, their taxes for this current fiscal year anyways, are essentially paid already.
I understand, I understand. I'm really, this is a future, it's a future look because we're all breathing a collective sigh of relief like we've had no problem here. My question is really, do we have any way of knowing whether that's actually true? Because with everything that the governor has done and whatnot about, you know, foreclosure prohibitions and whatnot, do we really know where we stand? Because once those things roll off, there may be, you know, a bunch of pain in town. I'm talking about now with respect to how we deal with, you know, the, the tax rate we're going to set and whatnot. But it doesn't sound like in that pile of data, Linda probably gets that information from banks anyway.
No, I mean, I.
Mike, if you had it.
Yeah, no, I haven't seen any correspondence on that, that sort of thing.
No, I don't think you know that until the first payment of the next fiscal year is due in July. She'll probably. Unlock a second.
Yeah, I just didn't, no, the banks are going to pay them anyway. Okay.
There might be one data point of the 39 referrals that we've gotten to people who've exercised that referral. 30 are homeowners. So there are going to be 30 homeowners that are showing some sort of COVID-related risk to their finances. So I mean, to your point, we, we know about these 30 people who've utilized the program that are just strictly homeowner residential, not businesses.
Right, but if, they're, they're the people who don't have a mortgage because if they have a mortgage, the bank is making the payment, right? So they, so presumably they have equity in their, in their homes. So that's one thing. I'm just trying to figure out like, what it is that businesses are failing here and people complain about not having a job. And a certain number of people in town are on unemployment and why we're not seeing it. I just, the disconnect for me, I'm trying to understand why that is. Because something's disconnected.
I hear what you're saying, Lynn. And I think, yeah, I mean, I mean, you've got federal subsidies, you know, unemployment enhancement. You've got stimulus checks. Yeah, yeah. So, so they're, and all these things are going to end at some point, right? So, so, yeah, I, I, I appreciate what, what you're saying that.
Yeah, I'm sort of going back to that half a million bucks because it's easy to sit here and look at like, whoo, you know, he was sigh of relief, it's all over. I don't think the trouble is visible yet. But I do think it's here. So I'm just, you know, I'm just throwing that out there.
Yeah, but it's probably a lagging indicator and we're not going to know until it happens.
Right, but it could be dramatic, you know, when all that.
I mean, you know, I don't want to get too far down this rabbit hole, but I, I don't think you're going to see it for another year. Given, you know, given the things that I'm seeing trying to hire people, they're not out there. They're, they're not applying for jobs. Now, you could say that's stimulus checks. You could say all you want, but trying to hire workers for a factory floor, it's hard, hard to do right now. Very hard.
Just that we need to be careful that, you know, we think it's just done and over here because I don't think it is, but we can't know for some more time yet till that stuff goes away.
Yeah, that's going to be a thing. Any other liaison reports? None? Okay, having no more business before this board, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion from Glenn, second from Dave. Any opposed? No, we're adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Appreciate it.
See you tomorrow.